All right, would everybody join me? Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Daryl, you want to have Jeff explain what's going on with the audio visual?
Yeah, we can do it. The audience. Yeah, sure, sure.
Jeff for Larry.
Love Larry. Yep. We all set and recording and everything? This is all new. So Larry, can you just give us a quick buzz around at what we're doing tonight? This is the.
Well, I hope you have a slant.
Well, I haven't convened it yet, so come on up and we'll state your name and who you are.
This is the first run of the new system. Obviously, your cameras are still from your old systems here in standard death resolution. But everything else is new. As you see, the monitor is new and computer in there. And you do have a dead mic over here that I talked with Matt about getting that fixed. And so we are recording it tonight to our LCTV YouTube channel. Anybody that's out there can see it on YouTube Live. They'll also be on our broadcast channel tomorrow. Next meeting will be on the Damascada Town YouTube, as well as our broadcast channel the next day. And I guess that is any questions? I mean, that's about it that I can think of.
I mean, we're good. We're ready to.
We'll, we'll, we'll have the link. You'll be available on your town page. And I can send all of you folks a link tomorrow to your own computers if you give me your email. I've got your emails and so you can just for your own use to review with the meeting. What did I say? Any questions I can?
Any questions on the board? We good?
All right. Thank you.
Jeff Kachakian is the cameraman.
Behind the scenes over there.
So, all right, so we are gonna switch things up a little bit. We're gonna open convene with the Board of Assessors meeting first. We can get that out of the way. So you can come on up and introduce yourself.
Jim Murphy. Your acting temporary pinch hitting assessors agent. I'm trying to recruit people for you or somebody for you. And I've talked with one person at length. We're trying to reach in a better spot. I have offered to Matt that if you hire somebody that's brand new to the business, then I'm across the bridge and we did it once before. We can do it again. So, but I don't know where you're gonna go at this point. I can keep your lights on for a few months, but I'm not your permanent solution. I'm sorry to say. I would like to be, but it's, it's not nine days in a week, so it's not going to work.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So we'll do the best I can. You've got a great staff and they are very helpful and very supportive. And we'll, we'll keep you moving forward for a little bit, but come February, it's not gonna be good. So. And so I have two things for you. The assessors return for Lincoln County is available and ready for signatures. The amount of 501-832-00047. And I believe I have a tax commitment documents ready for you as well tonight at the mill rate of 1590. Your overlay will be 80,000. That's probably more than sufficient. Matt and I have spoken briefly about things and I try to stay in the, in the communication circle with that. But he's happy. I'm happy. That's how it works. So. So that's where we're at.
You look pretty good.
I hope so. I haven't been involved here for eight months. So what I, what I checked from Matthew, everything looked good. Just wasn't his cup of tea, I guess. And I understand that because you gotta be a little bit off in the corner sometimes as an assessor. So, so that's okay. But, but it looks, your, your, what you've got looks good. Looks really good.
I'm good with moving the 15. Nine.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
So three pieces of paper, four signatures. And if you'd like to do a motion for Lincoln County sign. Or warrant as well, that would be also quite acceptable.
Daryl, if I could just give you some context here for, for this, while you're signing that. This will be the fifth year in a row that the board has reduced the tax rate. And that's, of course, not only due to the town. On the town's budget, tight budget, but also the schools. We've seen decreases there as well.
It's five years in a row.
Yeah, so outstanding. Most of my towns are in the same kind of boat. They're pretty close. There is some, I'm skeptical about the 55% state funding going forward. I, you know, this economy won't last forever, but today it is what it is. If you're in business, and I know some of you are, you can't find enough people. And you gotta get them to show up and not look at their cell phone every two minutes. So I'm skeptical of that. Revenue sharing is going up a lot next year from this year on all the towns. Still skeptical of that. So, you know, it's.
See if it lasts or.
See if it lasts and but let's plan, you know, think about a year or two down the road too. You know, I'm always concerned about biking taxpayers down and up. I'd rather, you know, flat is good, down a little is great, but.
The big jumps and fluctuations are not.
That's what people don't like change. You know, it's not that it's right or wrong. It's just that, that's, that shock. And, and that's, that's always, that's problematic for people. And I, I'm sympathize with that. You know, they plan ahead and it can be a big deal. So. A lot of moving parts in assessing. Yeah, no, it's not just the numbers. It's about how it affects people individually and, 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 you know, that's important.
Complicated area.
Yeah, that's. Little bit of science, a little bit of technology and a whole lot of art finger painting sometimes to get it all right.
Guesswork.
Sometimes, but just do the best.
Guesswork.
Educated. I guess you do the best you can with what you got. So.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome. So, thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I won't, I won't. I just told Matt I won't abandon you, but I kind of feel responsible. It's not really my fault, but we appreciate you. So I do in there and get, yeah. So you want to motion to sign the Lincoln County.
That's the county assessment.
County commitment.
Yeah, I made. Okay. That's on me.
So we're just, we're just making a motion to accept the.
501-32.
The 501. How the motion.
That's the number we had in the budget and in the warrant for the town meeting.
We're gonna pay it either way. So.
Yeah.
By law, we have.
Might as well sign.
You have to anyway.
I wanted to show them a penny when you.
Yeah, do I hear a motion or anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the county assessment of 501-832-47.
All right, can we?
Two seconds. Any discussion?
All those in favor?
Oh, but Jim, thank you for everything. Yeah, I appreciate it. Hopefully we can, we can buddy her up and keep your.
Stretch the week.
Yeah. Oh, man. I was thinking, I wonder who I am. We'll keep, we'll keep it moving. We'll figure it out. So I'll keep trying to find something to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
You may need to advertise.
Sign on the back, Joe.
I didn't know what that is.
There's two. I think it might be a copy.
Almost last year.
I'll sign that one.
That was 2020. All good.
Any questions for? Jim here.
Thank you, Jim.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. So we need to adjourn from the assessors or?
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the assessors.
Second, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, and with that, we'll open the Board of Slanters meeting for August 4th, 2021.
Just about.
Just, yeah, just about. Matt, the minutes, we haven't seen the minutes yet. Those will be.
All right, right. We'll send those out.
Okay.
Later.
All right, so we'll move on to.
Screen rises, yeah.
Our financial reports. We have one payroll warrant, number four today.
I'll move that. One second.
Seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I wasn't here.
For, oh, did you payroll warrant? Sorry. Yeah, these aren't ready yet.
Oh, okay.
A payroll warrant.
Sorry.
All right.
Sorry.
I did. Josh and then, then.
Thank you.
Yeah. AP Accounts Payable Five.
I'll move that.
One seconds. Any discussion?
Matt, there's two separate things in here. One's printed. Accounts payable warrant five with a lower amount. And then there's another sheet in here that's got a higher amount, but it doesn't have a, it's just a preview. One was 168 something and one was 169, right, Mark? One was 168, 914, 67, and the other one was 169, 220, 34. And I, this has printed. Number five.
Yeah, I would, if, if you would, could you approve the one that had the initials on it? And I'll find out what the discrepancy is and send you a.
I guess we can do with the amount of 169 and then you can deal with.
Okay, then I can always, yeah.
Okay, you can deal with that.
I appreciate that. I apologize for that error.
No problem.
No problem. Yeah. All right. Any questions? All those in favor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry that I missed the amount and who did the motions.
Sorry, Tom. I signed on there. 169, 220, 34.
Josh, Josh made the motion and Tom seconded. Yeah, problem. We'll slow down a little bit. It's the cameras.
I'm cruising. I gotta get out of here. Larry wants me out of here.
So we're gonna move on to, do we have any presentations tonight?
I think we do. We do. We have a Public Safety and Accessibility Committee. Mary Ann Moysian has, I properly pronounced your name wrong, right? Has, has prepared a survey and she, she took the lead in getting it online. Had a very good response to the survey. There were that many bicyclists in, in the, in the region. But she's gonna give you a presentation and also Jean Moon, who's the co-chair of the collaborative is here. And just want to say they're all doing a fantastic job. So turn it over to Mary Ann.
Just say your name into the microphone. There's the folks at home.
Sure. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Moysen, and I'm really happy to be here to talk about our bicycle survey. As a group, we really wanted to focus a little more on bicycle access and safety. And we needed a place to start. So we thought we'd collect some data and get some information about where people are riding their bicycles, how often they ride, what are some barriers to riding, and if people had suggestions to help make Damascada more bicycle friendly. What I'll do today is I'll go over some just brief highlights of the survey, but then I want to go question. And we have a PowerPoint. With some visuals I'll be, but there's a lot of really good information to share. And before I get started, I just wanted to acknowledge all of our community collaborators that we had on this project. Lots of people came together to help make it happen. Certainly the town of Damascada and Matt being on our committee. We had the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission involved. Our member Emily Cusa, county planner, helped out a lot and she was on our subcommittee that helped do the survey. Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust and Stephen Huffnagle, who's also our committee, the YMCA, the library, the schools. And a special thanks to Kate Martin at Healthy Lincoln County. She was very instrumental in hosting a survey on their platform and helping us shape our questions. So we get really good information from the survey. So just a few highlights. We had 136 respondents. Still a high number and good quality comments as well. We captured a wide range of ages of people and including people who have kids at both of the schools or were students themselves. There were really no big surprises that we found for those of us who ride our bikes in town or choose not to ride in town with safety being the biggest concern. Speed of drivers, lack of paved shoulders, or some type of bike path that people might be able to ride on kept coming up as consistent barriers to riding their bikes more often. So what I'd like to do, as I said, is go through question by question. So I think we have the PowerPoint we can put up. Jeff's gonna help us with that. It might be a different version. All right, yeah.
You can just.
Which one do I use? Oh. All right. All right. So our first question, whether permission permitting, how often do you ride your bicycle? So I think what's important to know is that 77% of our responders said they ride at least several times a month. And as you can see, some people even more. Actually, 50% said they ride daily or several times a week, which is, which is pretty high. And just some of the comments we got, I would like to ride my bike more, but don't feel safe due to traffic. We would like to ride several times a week. We moved here in July and can't find where we can go. Biking safely with kids. Speeding is a definite barrier. We'd like to ride more, but we live on Church Street and people drive so fast that the kids are scared. So those are the kinds of comments that we kept getting. And that was just the first question, whether permitting, how often do you ride your bike? Okay, so reasons why people ride their bike, of course, exercise and recreation came up top, high on our list. It was interesting that 12% of the people said they commute to work on their bicycle. And it's also really important for us to keep in mind that there's some people that that's the only way they can commute to work. So having a safe access to for bicycle riding is really important for those types of folks. All right. So what prevents you from biking more? As you can see, 95% of people said roads are too narrow or they lack shoulders or bike lanes. And 70% said cars drive too fast. People noted poor road condition. Since I worry about my safety, I worry about distracted drivers. We would bike every day, weather permitting, if we felt safer. And ours is not a bike friendly area. Many drivers seem to view it as a nuisance. Also, people just aren't on the lookout for cyclists. So some strong opinions. Okay, so this question, where do you bike in Damascada, really is gonna give our collaborative information on where to focus on our efforts to improve bike safety. So Church Street, Main Street, Downtown and Business Route One came up really high on the list. Those are real sort of thorough affairs for people to get from point A to point B. So even though people will tell us, we'll say in the next slide, that Main Street and Business Route One are, they bike more often if it was safer. People use it because, you know, you gotta get over the bridge and through Main Street to get from one place to another. At any rate, that's good information for us to have as a committee. And if we move forward making some changes, we can use that data. So what roads would, would you ride on more often if there were safety improvements? These four roads came up consistently here and in the comments. Biskey Road, Bristol Road, the part that's in town. Soon as you hit the Bristol line, there's wide paved shoulders and people who ride long distances like that, you know, need to access that and they don't feel safe in our town on that part of the road. And again, Main Street Downtown and Main Street Business Route One are two other areas that people want more safety improvements on. And several people on this question noted that if there were bike trails or bike paths, that they would bike more often. We had one person comment that, we did have one person, one person say they've seen worse car traffic in areas, but most people were saying things like this. I've used a bike on all of these roads. They are all in a technical sense lethal to bike on. I think money could be better spent looking at creative solutions for dedicated bike routes. So offering some ideas as well. So if off-road options were available for biking in town, which would people use? So I think what's important to highlight here, a lot of people would love a paved path. They're very expensive, but two thirds of the people answered this question said a gravel path would be helpful for them too. So that's a much less expensive option. And there's a lot of people who would love to be doing more mountain biking in town, but there are not a lot of dedicated trails for mountain biking. Oh, my question's gone out of order. Hang on. Question eight. Thank you. Um, so these were questions getting at children who might be riding their bikes to school. So if we just look at the bars for yes and no, so if you have children who attend Great Salt Bay School, do they ride their bikes to school? So only 5% said yes, they do. And 26% said no, they have children that go to that school, but they don't ride their bike there. And some of the reasons again were safety concerns. My son does ride to school, but I'm always worried as there seems no safe place to ride and cars drive so fast. And in this question, someone pointed out, what about people with special needs, disabilities? You know, there's really no way for those individuals to access safe biking in our town.
I got a question. How many, how many responded to how many are riding their bicycles to school?
I know. Let me look. So seven. Seven out of 39 who said they had kids at Great Salt Bay School. So that's 18% of the people who said they had, who filled this out, who said they had kids that go. Good question. Oops. Not why. Okay, so this question is about Lincoln Academy, which is not in our town, but people who live in our town go there. So we had a similar breakout on this where we had five respondents say they, yes, they ride their bikes to school. And 20, 25 said, no, they don't. So, and really some of the same reasons. One comment was honestly, if you build it, we will bike it. And another person said, we work at Lincoln Academy, but don't see many or any bikes or cyclists there. It would be great to see biking encouraged and have a safer bike lanes or paths and trails in town. All right, so this was a little bit of a complicated question, but we're trying to get an idea on how, who's riding and how they're riding. So people can ride all by themselves or also to see if how many people with families are out there riding with younger children, with old their children, if there are any large groups of bicycles riding through our town. So most of the people who filled out our survey said they ride by themselves. And some people said they ride with their family, but we had a lot more comments, particularly from people with young kids who said they just don't feel safe and they don't know where to go. So. So this next question was about looking at some potential improvements we could do in our town and what folks, they were able to rank these choices, which is why there's quite so many bars. But I can tell you the biggest things were bike lanes or paved shoulders on the roads. In terms.
Question.
Yes.
The orange bar on the far right is pretty significant. What's in there?
So that's a good question. Oh, so other, so that question was, oh, that's just how people were ranking it. So if you had one, two, three, four, five choices there, a lot of people chose other as their last choice, right?
Right, but there was no.
There was no, well, there were, we, we didn't have comments specifically on this question, but the next question is gonna relate to this, which was, oh, we don't have it on this because there were no numbers, was what else do you want the committee to know about your experiences? So that followed the question about ranking improvements. We had 72 people make comments on that. 72 out of the 130 36 people filled it out, had lengthy comments to say about what we could do. It would be hard to highlight all of this, but I will say again, trouble spots came up with Business Route One, Bristol Road and Biskey Road. And I think this comment sort of nicely encapsulates some of the things people were saying. This, as you know, is an exceptionally beautiful part of the country. The scenery and fresh air are wonderful for cycling. However, in my experience, infrastructure in Damascada is inhospitable to those of us on two wheels. The creation of bike lanes and our wider paved shoulders would encourage more people to ride, promoting fitness, health, time spent in front of local businesses and a myriad of other benefits. And someone else noted that too. Damascada is so beautiful. It'd be lovely to be able to more comfortably move through town on my bike without worrying about getting hit by cars. Lovely town, very limited riding opportunities. But you have a, I believe you have a copy of all this too, so you can look at all of these multiple comments at your leisure. And then we just asked some simple at the end, some simple demographic information about who was filling out the survey. So we had a lot of people who were year round residents and a few visitors or residents of other towns that drive through Damascada, ride through Damascada, I should say. We had a nice representation of a variety of age ranges filling out the survey, which is good. And yeah, and that was it. I think the question somehow I skipped was one about people's riding specific loops of bike riding that they do. So to get an ID. Yeah, because one of the strategies you can do is set up with signage, dedicated bike routes, so that it alerts motorists that that's a common place that people ride into lookout for that. So.
We have some of that already, right?
We have some signs entering town that ask motorists to be alert for riders. I'm not sure if we have dedicated bike route signs up in town.
We don't have, well, I've seen, I've seen some maps that do have bike trails through town, coastal trail system or. We don't have, well, I've seen, I've seen some maps that do have bike trails through town, coastal trail system or whatever.
But in terms of signage on the road that says bike route.
At the end of Egypt Road.
Egypt Roadhouse.
And then we do have the, the signs that we just put up last year, the state allowed us to put up last year. And make room for bicycles.
Yep. Um, so just to wrap up and then I'll be done. So yes, we talked about the trouble spots. Um, one of the, what we learned overall too, in terms of bigger picture, we identified a need to work on bike routes with a regional approach. Cause a lot of the people riding long distances cross two and three town lines to get their favorite routes in. There is great interest in town in a dedicated bicycle path, especially for. Safe family bike riding. There's interest in creating mountain bike trails. We did have several comments that more bicycle racks in town would be helpful. And I think just to wrap up that besides addressing the safety concerns of our current residents and providing those opportunities for exercise and recreation as a part of a healthy lifestyle. We really see improving bicycle access and safety as a growth opportunity for the town to attract more business and tourism to the area and to make our. Community more attractive to potential home buyers. Else to add to that. Thanks.
I have to say it was a, a, a very comprehensive survey. You know, we looked over the other day and it was impressive for the amount of information you had and the amount of people that.
Yeah, I think we had a really good, yeah, we did. We had a really good response and clearly the people who responded. Yeah. Had some very.
Yeah.
Had a lot of information they wanted to share. And make sure we all got the message. So we're going to, as a group, continue to work with the town and to help support measures to help making the town more safe.
That you'll probably hear from us again.
So clearly there is safety concern.
So years ago, when the state paved Biski Road, we asked them to pave the shoulders and we got a big no. So a couple of years ago, we decided, well, the state decided to pay. Bristol Roads, we asked them to pave the shoulders. They told us no. So we asked to do reclaim and we were going to pay extra to put reclaimed shoulders. They did a terrible job of what they were supposed to do and they never charged us and we never paid them. So we, we tried.
Yeah.
We've been trying to alleviate these issues.
To hear. Yeah.
But I mean, with the forefront of the bike, bikability of the town of DeMarisgata.
Didn't have a bike lobby then either.
No, we didn't have a bike lobby. So all the other roads, Belvidere and Egypt and all those, we're looking at, you know, coming up to pave, but we only have so much footage of. Right away. So those roads will not have a bike access. I mean.
Yeah.
But the roadways will be better.
Yeah. Well, that's good to know. Yeah. And I know we've been working closely with Matt, who's working, working with the town as well to try to work on those issues. Yeah. The state roads.
And as far as the, the off-road mount, mounting biking and paths, I mean coastal rivers has a huge enormous amount of tracts of lands in the town of DeMarisgata.
Right.
Some that they just acquired, you know, off of School Street. Forest land out there with some trails. I mean.
Yeah. And we're familiar too, with some trails behind the YMCA and while Lincoln Academy, that's in Newcastle. But we're working and collaborating with other, our community partners to see about.
CMP has, we've had some limited conversations. Near some power lines. Matt, you know a little bit more about the proximity of.
Just give, give us your name and introduce yourself.
So we've talked to CMP and it's, it's been about. Conversation, but they were open to the idea of allowing the town to have some access. To this power line area. And, and Matt, can you come? And on.
Sure.
The locale.
Oh, a lot of it goes through, uh, through private property. And so we would need to get the access from those private property owners. We, we did talk with some other towns that had done something similar where they were able to get access through the utility line. Trails or right of way, and they were successful at it. A few of us walked part of the, the CMP trail and it would need quite a bit of work. To make that bikeable, but you know, that is a possibility, especially for mountain bike travel. So.
Yeah. I'd say some of the bigger challenges for you really to know that with Main Street and where, you know, they're the limitation, it's very limited. That would appear to be more of a, like an outreach program, maybe, you know, getting people to realize that bikes are out there and maybe educating the public more.
Yeah. Awareness signs and also using the side roads or there was one comment particularly with, as improved. Minutes in the parking lot happen, maybe making some bike lanes there so we can avoid most of Main Street. Still have to get over the bridge.
Yeah. Bridge.
That'd be a good place for the racks too.
Yes, exactly.
There are, there's a rack at the library and one next to Misery Gulch now, but.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how.
Yeah.
How visible they are for folks. And the, I just want to add that the, the grant that we received, we've been awarded from Maine DOT. McDonald's includes a bike way. So they're, they're starting on, the, the main DOT folks are starting on the survey work to determine how much property is actually in the right of way. And, um, and they're going to come back with some recommendations in September. But when I talked with them the other day, it was Patrick Adams and Dan Loring, who, Dan Loring will be our project manager on that project. Their thought was we ought to consider a multi-use trail for both bicycles and, and pedestrians. I'm not sure exactly where it would go. We got to see what the right of way is there first, but that was their initial thought. So. That I just wanted to say that the, the bicycle way is being considered as part of the Main Street sidewalk project.
I'd be interested in that bike trail that was developed years ago. That's why that signs there in the Egypt Road. Does go through coastal routes. And there was a lot of discussion on where that goes through town.
Right.
Be interested to see that.
In terms of getting some of the history there of how that, how that bike route was established.
Cause I remember sitting in on those meetings over the fire department and what it was, we tried to make that so that. Wherever they went down around ponds, Egypt Road, it came back into town because we wanted those bicyclists in town.
Yeah.
Meeting and staying overnight.
Right.
There was quite a bit of work that went into that. And if there's any grants or funding that would help maintain some of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Certainly the Bicycle Coalition of Maine has lots of resources in that regard. And it's more than willing to help community groups and towns set up those kinds of bike routes. So yeah, we can, we can look.
Thinking is bigger though.
There are towns that are northeast. Well, they're very far ahead of us in terms of, of their bicycle trail system. The whole Rockport Camden, Rockland, Thomaston area has a fantastic system, as does Brunswick. So, I mean, those are, you know, we've talked to some of those folk. Folks and trying to get some ideas. We also have the former executive director of the Bicycle Coalition on, on the collaborative committee. So he has some insights. He worked with Mary Ann on this, on this survey. So. I mean, we, we're just at the very beginning stages of this though.
Start somewhere.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For your input.
Thank you. Hey, Matt, any, uh, we have citizen comments or any correspondence tonight?
No, unless, I, I don't have any written correspondence to review with you, but anybody out in the, out in the audience.
Well, it is part of the reason I'm here today. There are screening issues on Church Street.
Sure. Come on up.
Grab them. Yeah.
Yeah. No, you spoke up. You spoke up first.
I know.
So we just, yeah, just give us your name.
My name is Corey Redonnet. I live on Church Street and I've been talking to Chief Warlock for a few years regarding the speed. One miles an hour from, I think 40 in two different sections, which was great to see. And I would like to see and find a way, I know I need to discuss this with Matt and see where we can go with this, but. If, if all of Church Street was 25 miles an hour, I think you're creating a future. Your accident.
Turns down through there.
There are some.
Yeah.
And it's just coming down the hill. It's a shortcut to town. Everybody. And now that we've slowed down Business Route One, mine's become a, or Church Street has become a thoroughfare. And it's, it's, it's early trucks in the morning. It's late at night. It's the middle of the. Day. The only time it ever slows down is for pumpkin fest. I've, I've requested several times from the police department, um, a, a, you know, the speed sign that shows your speed. It's always unavailable. But I think something like that might be helpful to start. And I, yeah, I'd like to see it reduced. If not, I think we're going to have a bad accident on our hands.
Matt, how do we, how do we assess speeds locally other than like state roads and whatnot? How does that? Is it, is it state anyway?
All speed limits are set by the state.
Yeah.
By MDOT. So what we do is we ask for a speed study, a speed analysis and they'll come out and they'll do the study. But this is, um, this is the, you know, an issue that just burns the, the committee that just spoke to you is the way they assess the speed is they determine how fast people are going and they take the 85 percentile of that speed. And that's what they use for the speed limit. So it's kind of the reverse of what you would think.
So they're going to raise it to 40?
I have asked them to review Church Street because I know a lot of people go slower than the 35. Cause you know, you're going to hit a 30 and then a, a 25 later on. Also, you know, this won't help on the bicycle side and may not be all that great news for the, the residents there. But we, you're aware, we're going to, we, we plan on putting a sidewalk there eventually.
Yeah. Are you on my mailing list?
No.
Corey, I'll, we'll get you on that. Yeah. Yeah. We had a donation. From which we're funding a survey and actually engineering work for that, that. That sidewalk from Pleasant Street to Main Street. And they're in the process. Of completing that survey work now. And once we have that done and we have some cost figures. We'll try to get some grant money and some additional foundation money to, to build the sidewalk there. So that'll help a lot.
That's good news.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, but we, we have, you mentioned Main Street. Won't take too long, but we did have them come out and do the study of the, the speed limits. So they reduced the speed limit out to, um, out to the bank. Bank or savings. Satellite office to 30 and then 40 for a stretch. Stretch. And then it wasn't 40, but they said it should be at 45. So it, it cuts both ways. So they actually increased the speed limit when we asked them to pull it down to 35. So. We, I've asked them to do Church Street, to do the analysis of Church Street. As far as I know, they haven't been out, but I can, I can ask them to do that again.
I appreciate that.
Keep after them, but hopefully it doesn't go the other way.
I hope not.
If all else fails, we're putting Jimmy Kepbell up there. Yeah. Don't get slowed down.
Thank you, Corey.
Thanks, Corey.
If you would drop me an email and then I'll hit you on my, I believe that's for that project.
There's more than citizens' comments or correspondence. We'll move on. Matt will move on to town managers items at this point. You, are you ready?
Yep. And Doug and Max are, are both on our, our waterfront committee. So they may have some input into this as well. I'm sure they do. As you know, Max has been involved in the, the EDA grant and helping with, meaning with the administration of, of that grant. So yesterday I sent out a, a draft document that we sent to Wright Pierce. Actually it's been through several iterations in the, in the last few weeks since we, we, we received input from EDA and FEMA on what they want to see in terms of a wall. I gave you a copy this evening of the, the same draft with the edits made by, by Jan Wigman at Wright Pierce. You can see that he's in agreement with the scope, pretty much in agreement with the scope. That we had laid out in the draft. I guess my question for the board is what would you like to do in the way of approving an agreement that has, that includes this scope? Would you want a special meeting to review, have more time to review this and send me your comments? And then we can finalize the agreement or should I have Wright Pierce complete the agreement? And, and email that to you so you can approve it as soon as you're comfortable with it. Or if you'd like. If you did review this yesterday or the day before. And you're comfortable with the scope as we've outlined it, then you can authorize me to go ahead and sign that agreement with Wright Pierce to get them moving on the project. And then I know Doug had. Some views about the, the wall itself. We've, if I could, I'll just briefly describe that because that's a significant part of this. And I think we reached a significant milestone with our meeting with, with FEMA a few weeks ago, two weeks ago. On that, on that topic. What EDA and FEMA have agreed to do is allow us to proceed with the other elements of the project without the wall. If the entire project comes in above budget. And that, that was a huge breakthrough because from staff standpoint and the business standpoint, the bigger issue right now, 2021 is not the flood wall. It's the drainage in the parking lot and the condition of the parking lot. So that, that was a, like I say, a, a major shift and a major change. And then what they, they said was if that, um, if we design the wall, the same time we have all this design work done and the, the, the bids come in too high. To include the wall, we can go back and reapply for additional funds afterwards. And they, they really want us to build the wall to, to a level that, that allows us to take that area out of the flood plain. That's a high priority for, for EDA and for FEMA. Yeah. Yeah. So, but they're willing to let us do that in phases if needed.
Okay.
And then there was a, there's been quite a bit of discussion going on years now. About the wall and what, how high it would be. And, and, and what it would be composed of, what it would, what the structure would be comprised of. And. EDA FEMA want the wall to be. Well, at least 12.6 feet high, but the preference is 13.1 feet high elevation, not high off the ground elevation. So that we address not only the floodwaters, the hot rising tide, but also any, any storm action. Wave action and such. So that's the number that the consultants arrived at. Then the issue is what, how do you want the wall to look? We've discussed a, a wall with a glass. A base wall, base concrete wall to three feet and then a glass or removable or a fold down portion of the wall going up to the, the 13.1 level or an additional 2.1 feet. And. And that's that's the subject in this this first paragraph. And as we go down through the the full agreement, we've asked Wright Pierce to come up with some options on that. And I know there's concern and I I can understand this totally. There's concern that if we put a transparent wall, it's going to be a maintenance headache. It's going to look like an eyesore. But I guess from the staff's perspective, we ought to at least research it and and see what other have done in that regard. I just don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, I I would lean heavily towards some type of 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 structure where you you fold down the top two feet or you you put, you know, some type of slats in there to build it up when you know there's going to be a flood. But I I think businesses is and citizens, you know, you'll get the feedback from them directly when we have a meeting on this. But I don't think anyone wants a a five point one foot solid wall blocking the harbor all the time for the flood that's seldom going to occur.
So Matt, you you drafted this, right?
Yeah, Bob, George and I drafted it. Yeah.
And so they edited.
They edited. You see there, this is the second.
Right. So that's sort of a tacit agreement on their part that they agree with this.
Yes, yes.
Maybe it'd be helpful. We get a signature line on on your side and our side, the city side and their side, say, I agree to this.
This is acceptable to us with their edits.
This?
But I mean, the documents that you see here.
Acceptable to whom?
It's acceptable to the consultant to put in their contract for the second phase.
Okay.
And then it's acceptable to George, Bob and I.
Okay.
And I I think the the concern that the waterfront committee has still is this having this option that we'll continue to review for the transparent wall.
Sure.
But otherwise, my sense is that there's pretty strong agreement on this this scope.
Well, I mean, it's gonna then it's gonna be part of a contract.
Yes, okay, yes.
I'm up there.
Yeah. Now, the options of the wall, that's they're going to bring us some ideas that we will
Right.
talk about.
Exactly, exactly.
And cost.
Yeah. And what I suggest later on the agenda is that we have a community meeting on September twenty eighth. And that'll give them, that'll get the consultants a chance to refine some of these ideas that they had in the thirty percent design, such as the the storage for the storm water and also come up with some really clear ideas on what the flood wall could look like, what the options are. And we'll get the community's input.
Yeah.
At that point.
Definitely.
It'd be nice to have some choices, you know, because we've seen everything. Thing from the cement wall to the brick with the blast top.
And that's in here, the base being a brick. But what we didn't, we didn't include was a choice or an option where the the wall would be a solid concrete, five foot wall. So I I just don't see the point in having them do that.
No. It's gonna go over.
Yeah, you want to have, you want to have it, you know, not everyone gets out to walk the park to look at the view. You you want to have it so people in the parking lot can park, park right up against the wall will be able to see the harbor.
But it would be nice to have it designed so that in twenty thirty five, I if they need to stack coming up further, it's already had some of that thought ahead of time. Hmm. So that they, you know, it's in the the works so that they would have to do this, the next option.
Well, the way this would be designed, the way it's that we're asking them to do the project, to design the project, is you would have your two foot, your three foot wall. And then when we got the word that the we're going to have a king tide and a storm, we'd send a crew down there, whether that be Public Works, Fire or both, your town manager. And they just either flip up the 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 base so that it goes to the five feet or or, you know, however that works.
Yeah, those those add on.
Yeah, yeah.
Might be expandable over time if it need be.
We we only have so much manpower here, so we've got to make it so it's not too heavy. And yeah.
And one one other question I have is the three foot wall would pull some of the businesses out of the flood zone, but it wouldn't take all.
Would it? No, it wouldn't take any of them out of the flood zone. It has to be at least twelve point twelve point six to do that today. And then if you want to build in any cushion there, any extra free board, you've got to go to the thirteen point one, but the 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 three foot wall won't qualify us for a conditional letter of map revision from FEMA.
So their insurance is just still going to be in that flood zone.
Right. I mean, that's It would still be in the flood zone unless we have, you know, the three foot with the protection, the additional two foot protection. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't sit down or the businesses couldn't sit down with private insurers and say, you know, this is what the town has done. Give me a break on the on your flood insurance rates. You know, that's always a possibility. And and Evan's been looking at, you know, something we've looked at before, the community rating system to see if there's any possibility for discounts through that program. But no, but you know, the, as we said before, the 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 deal that's going to help the businesses the most is just take care of that drainage problem.
Yeah.
It won't help them on their insurance rates, but it will help them with the, you know, the real impact on their business every time we have a king tide.
We have a a general agreement between the waterfront committee and everybody right now. This is workable.
Yeah, I think the only and Max and and Doug can can comment. But I think the only area where there's that apprehension is is this idea that it could be a transparent wall on the top. But I think we ought to at least have Wright Pierce do a little more research on that. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
We'll get the mic for you. You can introduce yourself for our audience at home.
I'm Doug Morton. I live on Rand Lane. Um, my only question is, does this entire project have to be completed to the maximum level? Or can we postpone some of this ten or fifteen years down the line? And if so, where's the funding come for either case?
The the project needs to be completed, and this assumes we get an extension. Initially, it had to be completed within two years, but they'll go up to five years for these E D A monies. If we were to get approval for the project without the wall and then go out and and ask for additional funding for the wall, I think that would start the five year period again. But whatever or gets funded with this first three million dollar grant and our one point four million dollars in in local match, that will need to be done within five years of the grant being awarded, which was when April of last year, I think.
When the board has done?
Oh, when the project needs to be done.
I think April seventeenth of next year.
Uh, for, well, for the for the for the two years.
Come right up.
Well, for the two year, but we can get an extension up to five years.
You can just, yeah, give us just give us your name and the mic there.
Hi, I'm Max Johnstone, Mid Coast Economic Development District. Yeah, because we just had to do the quarterly report, I think, April seventeenth of next year.
Yeah.
When it's supposed to be done.
Right.
Which is going to be an issue because it's not like we can do construction during the winter.
There's no way we'll get it done then. And what we had, what we had done is I I put in an amendment, a request for an amendment to extend that like five hundred additional days. And what the response from E D A was, we will, without a doubt, give you an extension, but don't, don't ask us for the extension until you know what the new date is.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And that's just an advisable thing I'd say of you should wait until at least you get the bids back so you can have like a common.
Right. That's right.
Because if they all say like, if whoever the construction bids are going to be, they say July is when they're expecting to be done, then give it, give yourself like a three month window, just in case.
Sure.
Because we also have to close out all the forms and all that and other technical things. And you never know, we might have another COVID.
So you mentioned this a couple of times, but this gentleman wasn't here. But isn't it also true that if the bids for the whole project between the five year of the five foot wall exceed the amount of monies and we can proceed with the rest of the budget, the rest of the project without the wall and then do the approval for the wall.
Yeah, ask for money for the wall after. And
Which effectively puts the the wall development, you know, out for us.
Yeah, I'll pass them.
I meant to ask on that one, actually. Do you mean, because we got like seventy, the town got about seventy five percent from E D A. Does that mean you get another five percent or is that applying for a new E D A?
We didn't get into that. Oh, well, yeah, we didn't get into too much detail on applying for the funds, but the we have to reapply for funds, but where I'm not sure what the local match would be, whether that would, right now, we're getting reimbursed seventy four point three one percent. The town picks up the the difference with
Right.
the donations that we have, whether they would use the same formula if we reapplied and we're awarded another grant, I don't know.
If we do a new E D A, it's very likely it would be a fifty fifty match.
Okay.
If it's like brand new E D A application, although there there might be some.
I think there's some flexibility there, but we'll.
There's probably going to be flexibility, especially with the ARPA funding that the federal government's now getting out there which you're talking about the town match, but there's like E D A matches at this point. And then there's probably something that's going to come from the infrastructure bill. So who knows, it might be fifty percent, it might be another seventy four percent for all I know.
Right.
I'll let you all know when I get that information.
We'll know when you know.
To answer, yeah, Tom's question more directly. So not only would we delay the construction of the wall, we'd also delay the improvements to the park because it doesn't make any sense to tear up the park to put the wall in and then have to, you know, do it twice. So those two components would be delayed.
Yeah.
I would just like to make sure that we get all the paperwork done so that we know exactly where we stand from the taxpayer point of view and not leave anything hanging off.
Right.
Yeah, and right now we're, it's a tight budget. But we're not asking for any additional taxpayer dollars at this point. We may have to, when we get to this next phase, if the wall can't be included in the this, the the first larger project. So at this point, though, no additional property tax dollars are being requested.
So is there a planned deadline to get the bids out at this point?
Yes, January thirteenth.
So I mean, I looked this over the other day.
Yeah.
I just looked at your change, the changes. Good was.
Okay. So did you want to have a motion author authorizing me to sign a contract with Wright Pierce and S L R to move forward on on the second phase of their design work? And I need to get E D A's approval too, but I've been, I've included them in the loop on all this so far.
So we're comfortable there.
I guess the only question I have going forward, if they don't meet the time, time period of January thirteenth, what recourse do we have?
Yeah. We should put some some penalties in the in the contract.
I know we've had delays.
Yeah.
There's always some excuse, so.
Yeah.
I can make an excuse too.
Okay, so you make a motion. You want to amend the motion or can we?
Well, I mean, if we can allow Matt to kind of come up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I think they've know where we're coming from. Trying to hold their feet to the fire and get them to do. Today or minute, I don't care. We need something to keep them, something to keep them moving because we might get ourselves in a pinch too if they can't keep on schedule.
Right, because it's important to get the bids out early.
Yeah, especially on this this big of a project.
So you're making a motion now?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I make something up here that we authorize Matt to proceed with this agreement with a penalty fee and structure here to keep him on task.
I'll second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Carrie's here. Go through the rest of these items, I think, fairly quickly.
Yeah.
The theater has asked, they had originally asked to close Theater Street for three days in July or August. And I told them no, but they can, they can, I see I spelled November wrong, but they can do the work on their roof in November. So what I'm asking the board to do is approve the closure of Theater Street, November first, second and third. And then it's a backup date, eighth, ninth and tenth for them to to do some major work on their their roof. They need to, we wanted them to stay on the sidewalk and the parking spaces, but they said for safety reasons, they need to take the whole road.
I I think that's wise.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we allow them to proceed with those dates. Also, can I mark second, any discussion?
I just wonder what days of the week are the
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. All those in paper? Okay, and then we've set the public hearing for August eighteenth, so two weeks from tonight. And this is the public hearing to get citizen input on how to spend the American Rescue Fund dollars. So just that's an F Y I. I'll send out a newsletter on that with that date, but the public notice was in today's paper and be a next uh, next week's paper. And then I can give Evan more detail on that as well, if he has some column space, so.
The lead reporter. The lead reporter, yeah.
I talked to Andrew Federman today and he offered to allow us to use the Lincoln Theater for the community meeting on the waterfront. So the date that we talked about tentatively was September twenty eighth. I think that's good. I know we had, we had talked about late August date, but then it it occurred to me that the people we really want to attend, in addition to the citizens or the businesses, and they're not going to be able to make, most of them won't be able to make an August timeline because, you know, we're doing a booming business downtown. So this would be maybe after the shoulder season, but not quite into the pumpkin fest season. So my recommendation is September twenty eighth. We do it, I think, five o'clock works best for the businesses before they go home. But after they close their businesses. Well, does that sound right to you, Daryl?
What what day is that on?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday. I I think for the most part, yeah, yeah, you know, early, early evening.
Okay.
Get everybody, once we get it advertised well and
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And so if that's okay, we'll proceed with the the twenty eighth of September and I'll confirm that with Andrew tonight.
Sound like a good date.
Sorry, I made these additions and I didn't do this, the spell check on the mask requirement for town hall employees. There's a late and visitors. This is a late breaking item here. I got a call from another town manager who alerted me to the fact that Lincoln County has gone over the threshold for a substantial transmission area. So it was just slightly on Monday. I think it may be more so yesterday. I don't know what it is today. But I see that's like the Y has has reinstituted their mask requirement. What I'm, this is different than what I thought earlier today, but I talked to the staff out here. What we'd like to do is require masks for anyone visiting town hall, town business, as well as for employees and anyone who has meetings here, starting on Monday until we, you know, receive the recommendation from the C D C to to back down to the moderate level again. The governor's office hasn't given us a mandate on this, but they've, they've said they recommend that we follow the CDC guidelines, which are basically if you're in a substantial infection, transmission, sorry, transmission area, that you should have mask wearing indoors. And there's also provisions regarding schools, but that's, you know, not our bailiwick, so.
So this is change, this is changing like daily.
It is changing daily.
And if, if this goes back down tomorrow, then we'll wait a few, the next day and it'll be coming up and down, so.
Yeah, and as I said in my, my email message, it's, you know, we've got a relatively small population in Lincoln County, so just a few cases will bump us up over that, that next threshold. If you want us to wait a few days and.
Do you remember the numbers? Do you remember the absolute numbers?
I don't, I don't recall the absolute numbers, no.
The state.
It's on that link.
Yeah, the state number was up to one hundred and twenty-three.
We have three in Lincoln County today.
Twenty-three.
We also have a.
Oh, three.
Relatively high vaccination rate in.
Yeah.
Yeah, this community has.
One of the highest.
Yeah.
Ninety-five plus or something percentage.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at this, personally, I'm disappointed in not requiring masks.
Okay.
Making it an option for folks though.
I agree.
Hold off, okay, and we'll just monitor it on a daily basis.
Right.
But certainly, obviously in town, the employees, if they want to wear masks.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Employees, a lot of citizens are wearing masks. I see, I see a lot of folks visiting from away that are wearing masks now too.
Yeah, we had, okay, we had a few in here tonight.
All right, well, yeah.
We'll leave it under personal choice still.
Off on that one, and then I did add one more item. Paul Bryant has indicated that he is going to resign. He's been the harbor masterwork since nineteen seventy-one. I'm meeting with the interim town manager in Newcastle and the head of the the harbor committee to discuss what to do, but I believe from what I've heard secondhand, he's willing to stay through this season in that capacity.
Yeah, he's been there forever.
Yeah.
I know.
Have we ever had another one?
It'll be a tough. Tough position to fill.
That's right, yeah. It's like trying to get a fence viewer.
Is it appropriate for the town to give them some kind of recognition?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Definitely. Yeah, we could do that jointly with Newcastle.
At the right time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we absolutely should.
And unless you, you have any questions on any of those items, that's all I have.
Well, I would just say on the harbor master, that's a pretty critical role because he said, he salves a lot of problems on the water. So we have to work together with him to find somebody that's going to take that over. Just let it drop.
I think there's probably some pretty good candidates within the aquaculture.
Oh, that's possible, yeah.
In the oyster.
Yeah.
Community.
Yeah.
Talked in that, he can be the next generation.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. That'd be nice, but I don't, I don't know. Paul says he's been asking around, but hasn't found anybody yet, so we'll see.
Get the word out, we'll start pushing. Right, anything else under, are we good? Matt on your end?
Yeah, not any questions, anything, we'll move on. Let's move on to official action items.
So, yeah. I can, I didn't send out a written description, so I can explain what's going on there. Evan, the seven.
The intern.
It's, has been doing quite a bit of work on the broadband and trying to get us in the queue for some either main connect money, connect me money or some other funding and a, an important step in that is first of all, the, the committee. And we're, and he'll explain in more detail, we're going to piggyback on what Newcastle's been doing there. And then another step would be to get a plan in, in place, and that's what this grant would be for. So I'm, I'll let you take it from there, I won't steal all your thunder.
All right, sounds good, all right.
Give us your name then.
Evan Goodkowski, your very own summer intern. Let's see, if you recall, when I first talked about broadband, that the planning aspect of it to get a consultant was probably going to be somewhere between ten and fifteen thousand. Well, today I'm coming to hopefully ask you guys for two thousand. So myself and David Leveque with a lot of direction from Krista Thorpe from the Island Institute submitted an application on Monday night for a planning grant from the main community foundation. They're going to put together about forty-nine hundred, Newcastle's going to put down fifteen hundred with hopefully the fifteen hundred from Damascata. And that's going to go to LCI, who's give it to a consultant and gardener, I think it's Casco Bay Advisor. And they're going to do the full build out plan for Newcastle and Damascata to figure out what it's going to take to get everybody percent coverage for fiber. And with Krista's direction, she's advocating that Newcastle use a majority of their planning money that they've received from a planning grant previously to keep me on as like a community organizer person, because the end goal is to also rope in Noble Borough, they don't know this yet, and South Bristol into a four town foul sweep, try and put, because that's what's going to make it look good on papers, you got four towns, everybody's in. Let's come together and get as much money as we can all at once. And right now, getting ready and being ready on the pike, once all the cash hits is going to be the big deal. So I'm hoping that you guys would want to approve about two thousand, fifteen hundred going toward Damascata share of the plan and five hundred go on toward any organizing or mailers that we have to do for surveys and these type of things.
So question, are you going to wait until you try to solicit the other towns?
The other towns, we're going to get the plan, they're hopefully going to be getting planning money from the Island Institute for their planning portion.
Have you had discussions with them?
Haven't even got to it, I'm not on the bill for that yet, and I can't do work for free, I got stuff to do.
Well, I'm just asking, if we're putting in money on the basis that all these towns are going to be part of it.
Money going down would only be toward the plan for Damascata's half of the Newcastle Damascata build out plan.
Okay.
Separately, I would assist with a little bit of seed money from Newcastle Damascata that would also actually, no, what, anything that Damascata would be putting in, I would be putting back into Damascata. The Island Institute would be covering and Lincoln County Regional Planning would probably throw in a little bit too, for me to start going after Noble Borough and South Bristol and get everybody organized under an umbrella.
And the hope would be you could pull them in.
Right.
And.
They're all under the tide water thing, so that's just.
So just clarifies, it's actually the, we're talking fifteen hundred, which would be our share of the local match, right? And then another five hundred for these other items that, that Evan's talking about. So Newcastle is already committed and they've already submitted the grant application, right? We're just piggybacking on what they've already done.
So I put us down for pending, so we're, nobody's committed from this side.
Okay.
Till tonight, so.
Well, I think I'm committed, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a good thing.
We should move forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, the, the formal action be, would be to allow a transfer from the contingency account for two thousand dollars for the, for the, the grant local match and for additional administrative follow-up.
I will make that motion.
Thank you very much.
Second, Tom second, all right, any discussion, all in favor?
Now you know what you can work on tomorrow.
All right, let's go.
Thank you for your help.
All right, Matt, we have a cemetery deed.
Yeah, we have a transfer.
Is that the one in front of me here, is this a?
Yeah, oh, that's why I left it.
Is this okay?
Yep, that's the one.
All right, so this is we have here. Not going to carry away. What do you need for motion on this one, just to approve?
Transfer.
Transfer from. All right, just helping with the wording on it.
Transfer of a cemetery deed, I think it was from the race to. It's the way it's up there.
Yeah, to, yeah, to, from the race, we do from the race, yeah, to Damascata.
No.
No, what do you?
Another party.
It should be. So it's going to be from currently owned by Malcolm and Carol Ray, and it would be transferred to Nancy Callahan.
Right.
I'll make that a motion.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Lots of names on there.
Okay, there is, there are, thank you.
Okay.
And yeah, please sign that.
Yeah, we'll sign that one.
It's a formal deed.
Transfer, a deed transfer, send that down your way, guys, we're working that through.
And then I had a couple of other documents for you to sign, these relate to the, the town meeting that was held back in June where two ordinances were approved and I'm asking you to sign those. So Tom wouldn't sign with the other four, if you could sign those.
Zoe, you have official action items, Matt, at this point?
No.
Yeah. No way, Josh. All right. Before we move on to select this discussion, we'd like to thank LCTV for setting everything up and getting everything going tonight. Do we want to discuss the payment process? About a contingency for them to move forward, or what do we have for options?
So basically it's contingency, we do have a fairly tight budget. So at this point, at least in the air, the only flexibility is with the contingency. So I, I talked to two today about this and, you know, I had, we had from the start estimated forty meetings at a hundred dollars a meeting, that's four thousand dollars. And we wouldn't have to have the planning board meetings covered right away. We could see how it works with the Board of Selectmen meetings and then add the, the planning board meetings later. We do look at, we're already two months, almost two months into the year, or well, we started tonight, so it would be a month into the year, so that would take out two of those twenty-four, so twenty-two meetings, twenty-two hundred dollars.
Yeah, allocate twenty-two hundred, right, if we need to.
Right, you know, and I disagree because the reason I'd like to see us stay with the forty is the whole idea is to educate the public on these meetings. I do think it's very important that we have the parks committee that's going to be meeting these public hearings that we have. I think it's very important that we get the word out there and use these either COVID funds or the franchise fees that come in. Because we collect nineteen, twenty thousand, whatever that number is, I think it's important that we reach out to the taxpayers and keep them fully informed of all these meetings we have. So if we budget forty meetings, let's pick and choose what the best situation would be.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And so what's your motion?
We don't, we don't have the four thousand budgeted, so we'd have to take it from contingency. So and, and the, the twenty-four thousand that we budgeted for the franchise fee goes into the general fund and we're spending, what, about eleven thousand thousand, seven hundred of that is going to LCTV. So, but we can't, we can't reallocate those dollars.
Right, because you're using that as a revenue to balance your budget.
That's right.
Yeah. We can't, we can't do that.
So, and the only way we could add additional revenues to the budget would be to go back to a special town meeting. So that's why I say the only option at this point is contingency, so we could do it for four thousand, it's early in the year to be tapping the contingency twenty-two thousand.
So here's what I would like to try, and I don't know where, if I should say this, but I'll say it as a citizen. That my mother is on the board for LCTV, so I'm going to kind of stay out of it, but as a citizen I, if we only have X amount of dollars to work with, I do a six-month trial for both the planning board and the selectmen's meetings, just to see how it goes and to see if we need to tweak it as we go. And then maybe we can find some funds as it goes and not commit all that money at this moment towards that. That would be my suggestion as a citizen.
Sounds like a plan.
Will we have the contingency?
Well, we have twenty-two thousand in the contingency account. We use two thousand of that, well, roughly two thousand on the equipment and then another two thousand on, on the approval tonight. So we've dinged it four thousand so far.
So we're down to eighteen.
Right, yeah.
So another two, based on what you're saying, right?
So we do another two at this point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Moving easy.
Fair compromise and hopes.
That's prudent, you get six months.
At the end of it. But we also have a twenty-five thousand dollar emergency.
Yeah, we have an emergency fund.
We tried to not use that.
Well, we'd like to hold off until as late as we can, if we, if we tap that at all.
So I, I think if you, just my personal citizen opinion, if you just try to six-month trial, see how it goes. See if there's other funding sources that might pop up along the way and we'll evaluate it after five months and maybe we have a different funding source that might come up.
And you do have those COVID funds.
The COVID, no, we don't, I mean, we, there's no, there's nothing in, in the American Rescue Plan and the state and local allocation that allows us to tap those funds. I know, I think Larry may have mentioned that that's, Newcastle was going to try that, but you know, you go down those five categories, it just doesn't fit.
No.
So Josh, you going to make a motion?
I can't.
You can't?
He's going to.
I gotta sit out with this one.
Family.
I'll make a motion that we allocate for six months, the, the funding of LCTV conducting these meetings and, and for the planning board for the next six months.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm going to abstain, just to be legit.
Well, I will say though, I think it's very important that we have some very important meetings that would be coming up to do with that backpack and line. That we should be reaching out to them if needed.
Yes.
Yeah. September twenty-eighth by your calendar.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can work within that budget right now and then find some money moving forward.
Yeah.
Keep the guys on the payroll if you're filming, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mark says it's important to get this out here and with the waterfront improvements and whatnot, we can utilize it, so.
Yeah, personally, I can't see us not redoing it in six months.
Right.
Because I'm very impressed what they have done so far.
So we'll buy us some time to, to find some money and provide some money to, so we'll be proactive on that.
Good.
Sounds good, well, we'll start taking motion.
Yeah. Oh, we make a motion to.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom made a.
And we voted.
Too, and yeah.
So we're, we're good there. Those select miss discussion items, we'll start, not any with Tom?
Well, I had a citizen mention that they were concerned about the safety at the intersection of Bristol Road going south where it intersects with School Street, looking to the right to turn left. They're saying there's a lot of brush there that sort of makes you come out too far or forces cars to go around them to get by, and that creates another safety issue on the other side. So I don't know whether or not that's private property or whether that the, the right of way that town has is sufficient for some limb cutting or whatever.
That is a state.
State DOT right of way and they're, they are supposed to maintain it, but when I get calls like that, I have our public works crew, crew go out and cut it. So I got that call on Thursday afternoon and I sent out Steve on Friday, so it's been, it's been mowed. And I talked to the citizen today and he was, the citizen that contacted me at least, and he was very pleased.
What about the branches?
I did. I didn't do anything with the branches.
Yeah, you gotta be kind of careful.
Well, we should make a phone call to the state and get it taken care of.
Oh, we send in the work order, but it takes a few days. And when you have a complaint like that, I, I just want, I just assume have, you know, us take care of it.
Two, two accidents within a week. One was Tuesday night.
It's a bad, it's a bad intersection.
Yeah.
But you gotta stop too.
And you know, it, it, that is. Intersection, the state allowed us, because it's a school street, a state aid and, and of course Bristol is a state highway. But they allowed us to, to repaint that, so it comes to a T rather than an angle.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I've asked Dave Allen to, to look at that and see if there's anything else that can be done, but it is a.
Yeah, you don't get a long shot there. I've almost had a couple accidents.
Oh, it's a, it's a tough one.
Dark car doesn't have a lot of chroma. You can't see it coming.
I do agree, it is better. You do have to square up. Yeah, I agree with Tom. You have to actually pull your nose out into the road to see by the bushes.
Yeah.
Maybe that.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Luke? I have nothing other than again, thank you to LTV.
I'll piggyback on that. I think it's great and I think it's gonna do nothing but improve. I think it's so important that we get as many options that we have available to let the taxpayer know what's going on in this town. That's all I have.
Josh?
Let's get to the workshop. That's all I have to say.
I don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said, I think, so uh, yeah, we can, we can move on.
I make a motion, we the selectmen's meeting.
Same, so go, go into workshop.
Yeah.
Yep.
Going to workshop.
Let's keep going then.
All in favor?
You want to record the workshop?
Absolutely.
Larry, you're not going home yet.
Yep. Put you to work, Larry.
Yeah.
And Jeff.
Probably Jeff will get up and say, oh, Larry, this, you got me into this world, I'm out of here.
You're getting the hot seat?
Yeah.
First item we had was an action plan. Weeks ago. Okay. Reset the goals and get a chance to look them over and take a peek.
Do you want to go through them one by one or do you want to just do it page by page or, and you know, these are just my thoughts, so it if you've got any
Sure.
Different ideas, additions, whatever.
Bounce through them and then we can start where I'm, anybody has any comments or concerns or additions. But that's good with the rest of the board.
The licensing, well, just go, let me go through each one.
Yeah.
Licensing ordinance, that's something we've had for a while. Well, it's not been a, a top priority, so it's, it's gotten pushed to the back burner, but we should wrap that up. I think that the, the only, yeah, that, there was a big question there. We had it and we did have it in draft form. And the, the question is whether we wanted licenses for all businesses and that's something we would discuss now, but it'd be maybe the topic of a future workshop. Right now, businesses come into town and we don't know they're there, you know, so it's, it's kind of hard to to, to first of all, communicate with them to make sure they're complying with the code enforcement requirements and make sure they're on the, the tax rolls, especially personal property tax, so.
How typical is that? And do we know anything about Newcastle?
Oh, I, I don't know if Newcastle does, but we have examples from other, other towns. Yeah, that they do that. We've got quite a bit of information on it. It's common practice, yeah.
John, if it's a change, are you John?
What's the, what's the, what's the issue for us?
Uh, whether to, to have a license, a business license.
I understand, but if it's common practice in other towns, what are, what are the pros and cons that have been?
We can discuss that, I think, uh, yeah, I don't know if you want to discuss it now, but, but the, you know, off off the top of my head, I listed the pros. It would be nice to have a record and a communication bank. The downside is, I think a lot of businesses might feel like it's another intrusion onto, onto them by their local government.
Yeah, yeah, the, the others, I was gonna suggest that on the con side of it. You have to be able to support those businesses too, in a way, so if you're licensing them and they come and they need some guidance. And so what now, we'd be prepared for that as well, you know, if they're, we simply take the money without doing anything and it'll be a.
Well, you know, and then the fee structure is totally, a totally different issue. Now, whether you, you don't even necessarily have to charge a fee. Or you could charge a nominal fee like five bucks a year or whatever.
Fee or something, so, yeah, yeah, okay, all right. Well, all I'm thinking is if, if nearby towns like Newcastle are doing it, maybe we could get some experience talking to them as to pros and cons.
We've got quite a bit of data that we've gotten from other towns. I don't know that Newcastle was one of them, but count towns that have lots of commercial activity, we've polled them and we have spreadsheets that, that show what they did. Or at least when we first started looking at this too, uh, we probably need to update those, those sheets.
We heard we have one of the assessors hiring.
Assessors hire and hiring and then the town manager, I think you need to start that fairly soon after the first of the year. I had, I said, uh, working with uh an outside consultant such as MMA, but I've since found that Don Garrish still does this with the, so that's how you got me. You can make a decision on whether or not that was.
Remind us when, when's the date?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
My last date.
So we should, uh, yeah, we really should move now and get stuff moving on that. I think we should wait.
And, and I did talk to Matt about Don Garrish with Eaton Peabody.
Yeah.
Um, he's very familiar. He filled in as interim before Matt got here.
Okay.
When we went through that process before, it was pretty easy for the board.
Okay.
Because Don and Dick had weeded out, everything went through it. They knew what we were looking for. And obviously, they brought us a good candidate to go with.
Yeah.
We already have a familiarization with them. They already know what we want. And I think if we do with somebody else, we'll be kind of starting all over again.
Okay, we should, um, we should reach out to him.
Yeah.
And get some prices and some options for you.
Yeah, thank you, Matt. I'm not trying to get rid of you, but we, you know.
No, I understand.
So Matt, how much? How much time do you think you need as overlap with the new candidate? To work with them, to familiarize them, whatever.
Oh, to work with a new person? Don, Don spent an afternoon with me.
Yeah, his, his motto was, well.
I came in on my own time with him that afternoon.
Well, yeah, but you, you have a lot more.
Oh, I know, I know. I, I, kidding aside, I, I think three weeks to a month.
Yeah. Okay, well, that should be, my point there is that we need to put that in as a buffer.
There's a lot of, a lot of detail.
Start on it now and get it moving and get some.
And I'm, and I'll be working toward getting the files organized and, and, you know, both the electronic files and the, the hard copy files. Making it as easy as possible.
This, this transition will be much easier because, well, you'll be working with them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Before it was, Don was here and we had it as the interim for a while, so.
And we get Jim available if needed.
Assessor?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I'm talking about.
Oh, the town manager, yeah, yeah, yeah. Assessor we're working on right now.
Yeah.
Cause, um, yeah, Jim's helping us with the, the tax commitment, but he's gone after that.
Yeah. But then, you know, as far as assessing, I'm not to change the subject too much.
I'm sorry, I changed it.
But I'm gonna go to that. Um, we've got a lot of non-taxable entities here with large tracts of land that aren't functioning in any capacity other than sitting there. Technically, if they're not using it for their mission, then it should be taxed at appropriate rate. And if they've got large areas and I'm open to open space rates with a reduced rate. But if there's no plan in place for what these organizations have, and if they're not utilizing those spaces or pathways or within their conservation mission, then they, they should be taxed.
I'll add a, a goal if you if you'd like on that, just saying we've got to have someone, whether it be this new assessor or whoever, uh, looking at the criteria for tax exemption. You know, it's a right, it's a, a percentage scale and, but they need to have met that.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if, you know, you look at some of the areas that are protected, yeah, it's great that we have conservation and we've had all those areas, but our commercial growth is, or any type of growth is gone now. So our tax base is going away, but everybody that pays taxes in the town is supplementing for all these services. So when, how much is enough, you know? There's certain organizations around here that just keep, seems to be going, keep taking. Especially when we had one area that was designated in our comprehensive plan as a industrial, commercial growth area and that's gone now, so.
Yeah, it's a lot of tax base.
Not to digress further, but I, I noticed going through the tax rolls that there are a couple of major outstanding, couple of years tax payments. What, what's the process of going after those?
Well, on the property tax, we, we do liens and then it's, and they, the, the, the process for uh, handling, uh, delinquent taxes is clearly outlined by state statute. So you go through a, uh, well, first we charge them the interest for being late, then we go through a lien process and then we have to foreclose on them. We do that as the taxes assesses.
Yeah, well, I always think I have to, would, I mean, two years, no payments.
I think you could go as long as three years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm all set there. I read, rented on that.
It's good. Yeah, no, that's, that's a, a good addition, Josh. I'll look into that. We can get somebody to look into.
Yeah, I'll add that.
Yeah. It's, you know, as long as they meet the criteria we have, have to, but if they're not, then. All right. All right, now, let's just keep going along that.
Okay, uh, some of these are, just, we, we've been doing them every year since I've been here. The, uh, the five-year plan will update that.
Okay, you want me to go on that one? Do you have? Technology plan.
Yeah.
And I've talked to Matt about this. Coming up with a, a plan for the select board and the planning board, uh, getting Chromebooks that are issued from the town to those members, so we're not personally using our own and buying our own. Because technically, we're operating on the town's behalf and it, the town should supply if we're gonna be doing all these Zoom, Zoom meetings. And you know, if we are on Google or we can do our docs and it should be a town issued device.
And we could go paperless for board meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's just something to look into and start planning on.
Look at the equipment prices and.
You know, if we do select board one year and then we do the planning board the next and, um, just trying to stay ahead of the curve here. Because it's not really fair to us if we've been using our laptops or a company-issued laptop for uh, all our Zoom meetings that we had this previous year, so.
And the other thing is too, is the freedom of access of information at any time.
Yeah, but I mean, a Google account is pretty easy to get to, but I mean, just going through our personal computers and everything is kind of a pain in the ass.
Long-term use, long-term sustainability.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then, um, well, I get further down again, Matt, so you can keep going. You get one more to go.
Yeah.
We talked about these two.
Yeah.
Yeah. And yeah, we update the annual uh, multi-year paving and maintenance schedules for public works. I don't know if the Public Works Committee has comments on that.
And I, I guess when we have a next public works meeting, um, I've got it written down that we come up with a, a ten-year plan. Cause we always used to have something similar to that mark years ago, and I'm gonna ask that we try to get some estimates, just to meet with a few local or any paving contractor about milling, uh, Belvedere in Egypt, just to give an estimate on what we need to budget for to do these projects, so we can, um, within our next fiscal cycle for our next budget, that maybe we can that debt service is gonna be paid off, correct, Matt?
This shoot, this October.
This October. So if we have, that was what, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty thousand was our debt service payment?
About a hundred and twenty thousand now. Um, we'll still, still have a, a ten thousand dollar payment on the street lights, but yeah, it's, it's minimal.
So if we can plan now and get things lined up this fall, maybe we can do a bid in the spring with a potential bond, which the hundred and twenty thousand to pay the bond should be no increase to the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to bid on it in February?
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And get it out there. The other thing is.
That's what I mentioned.
The other thing I was, I'd add with that is the main local roads, when they put on programs to make your roads last, they use a seven-year cycle. And what they'll do is they'll, you clean your road, you shimmy road, you tack it, you shimmy road, and then you put an inch and a half on top of that. And if you go out and look at Back Meadow Road from Business Route One to the Noblerboro line, that's exactly what got done. And then soon you hit the neighboring town, that was done at the same time. And you can see the difference in the road on which one held up longer. You spend more money per mile in the beginning, but your upfront cost is less than.
So, you know, I know this, this is probably off the wall, but you know, we, we heard about this biking thing and I have to think biking, like what they did in Camden, a rock board is really helpful to tourism, if nothing else. And, uh, you know, it seems to me somewhere along the line, we have to think long-term about where that could come into play. And it looked like there were a couple of arteries that got most of the interest, Main Street, Church Street, uh, and then out to uh, Biscay. And, you know, as things happen along these paths, we ought to keep in mind the possibility of creating a bike lane or something like that. And maybe, I don't know if you can work with the state at all, I don't, it might be helpful to find out what these other towns did and where they got the funding, but it's probably a lot of private funding, but I don't know. But you know, you're, you are restricted in downtown, obviously, because there's not enough width. But if you can get into downtown, you know, and then walk the bike, whatever, from some of these main arteries, I think it'd be a big improvement. I think it'd be well-received.
Well, I'll add on to that because I was at a meeting years ago when the town of Bristol, the state, the DOT came in and we had a joint meeting. And what their issue was about the yellow, the white line along the edge and bicycles riding. And the town of Bristol spoke up and says, well, you haven't even got enough pavement to put a white line. So they ended up getting that paved shoulder for the rest of the way down through there. And Dan Mascotta's got some tight spots too, so it's difficult.
I, I didn't know the history there. I just thought that when they did one twenty-nine and one thirty, they had the, um, their state right-of-way already and they just, it's always been that way, so.
Not, not all the time. They didn't do all the shoulders every time. Not not all the time. They didn't do all the shoulders every time.
No, Bobby Foss Foster is the one who brought it up during that meeting. Then what they did is they went out and did it, but Demus Scotta has a tight area, but they still have, the state still has the same right of way. It would be just infringing on, it seems like it's infringing on people's property, trees would come down. You know, it's.
You don't know if you don't know, if you don't ask.
We've got two to three feet. It's not huge, but we do have the right of way for a shoulder. We found that out when they, you know, when they put the uh recycled material down.
Well, you know, going forward with these, the the long-term plan, you know, with the with the collaboration now, moving ahead as much as they have, you know, there's. Said earlier, there's, they have some lobbying now, you know, if you have other people involved and you know, next time. We have an issue with Bristol Road and the state doesn't want to do it, well, you have another entity that come in and say, hey, we we want to push for this, so you know, more voices.
I also think they need to do some private fundraisers and we can't come up with these, all these funds all the time.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, my point is, it's nice to have a place to put the white line.
Well, I don't I don't know mu- much about the planning department, but that, you know, they have a long-term plan, they have zoning and all that stuff. And part of that plan should be consideration for bike paths or, you know, walking paths or whatever.
We have the the comprehensive plan, two thousand fourteen that we need to, well, it's in here.
And we have a bike and pedestrian.
Yep, that's been in there and we've had, you know, the there's a a bike pedestrian plan from two thousand eight that was updated in two thousand fifteen, so. Planning documents.
So where is the call for the, where where's the calling for the pass? The same places that were discussed or?
The uh, basically, the 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 committee that you heard from tonight is following that. That plan.
Well, they were getting.
They're taking the highest priority items. Right now, those are Main Street and Church Street, and they've put it at the top of their list.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're we're doing what we can to follow through, yeah.
Research down and whatnot, yeah. All right, uh, yeah, we'll move along here, Matt, with uh. Yeah, three-year plan on the Public Works Department. And we. I think that's a a. An area that was. And definitely, uh, we spent some time on and and as we discussed in the past, so um, conjunction with a. Go town manager and the board and and the uh road commissioner and whatnot, we can look and see how it if it needs to be restructuring or what we can do and make things more efficient. And and you know, if it's servicing the the town and whatnot, so.
Well, yeah, we'll come up with a uh draft uh two two-phase plan for implementation over the next two budget years.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, definitely not, yeah, not overnight, and I, you know, I I was thinking, do we look into? With that plan, will we look into, you know, surrounding towns or other towns and see how sure things work for them and, you know, get some ideas anyway.
Sure, we do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's already some systems at work in other places. We don't need to reinvent the wheel either.
So Matt, just to go back to complete phase two design for a lot of them. When we get going on this project, when it comes to bid and the bids are all come in and. And we're getting ready to start construction, I think we need to, as the town, hire our own super. Superintendent Clerk of the Works to on behalf of our town, not the engineering firm. I think we've. This project, we need to have our own independent person that represents Demus Scotta. Not the engineer in firm.
So you're seeing a clerk of the work.
Of the works, it works for the for the town.
We'll need to do that through a competitive bid process to have it covered under the grant, but it doesn't have to be the lowest. Cost, yeah.
That that, yeah, that appears to be a full-time.
Oh, yeah.
Project for somebody, so I know in the past we've had.
Critically important.
Part-time, they're doing several other projects, but that's gonna be one that we need somebody there advocating for the town the whole time and keep an eye on it.
Non-affiliated with any of the.
Yeah.
Neutral.
Yeah, yeah.
We had that when we built Great Salt Bay. I don't know, clerk of the works.
I just want to put that out there that when we get going forward, we get to figure out how to. Add into this project. I'm pretty clear for a couple more pages.
Are you sure? Do we go back to page one again? No, that's fine.
I don't come back up till page four.
Where are we at now? The second page, man, are we? See funding for infrastructure improvements. Yeah, that's just an ongoing.
That's, yeah, that ties into the, that's part of the uh, I should put the uh. P S A group, the Public Safety and Accessibility Group down there too. That's that's a key part of their mission.
Okay, yeah. And then, uh, yeah, heater road, where we stand on heater road now, you still, we still have some.
I'm waiting for the, you know, we've got everything in place. I've got the documents drafted, well, documents finalized. I just need to get. Um, Benner and and uh. Cole. To sign, sign them and have them notarized.
Re- remind me of us that the um, with the the asphalt, we're gonna do the recycled asphalt.
We were gonna do, well, then, now we have to start from scratch on that because uh, yeah, uh, two years ago, Hanley had the. The asphalt, the recycled asphalt that they were gonna give us, and we just needed to get it laid down.
Yeah.
And that's no longer.
But that, yeah, that was.
I mean, it just, uh, this has taken, yeah, too long.
Yeah.
And I I'll send them reminder notes and I can call them again. I've talked to both of them, you know, face to face. The others uh have either, uh, there's two others that have very small parcels, they've either. Agreed to it already and sign the documents or, you know, there's not an issue there, just those two.
On the, on those.
Yeah, yeah.
I do think it's important to get that because I think we gotta look at the drainage out there. I know we've been told that everything's running, but I'd recommend you guys ride out there to see what the drainage is actually.
Yeah, it definitely pawns up and we, for the Benner Benner property, we agreed to put a culvert in for them just for that reason, so. Yeah, yeah.
We'll move along here, uh, yeah. Next item, they consider major bond issues to address funding for roads and sidewalk infrastructure improvements. That's an ongoing process right now and.
Well, that ties into the uh ten-year plan that that um, that Josh was talking about earlier.
Yeah.
But that would tie into like the money that you have set aside for Sherman Williams. And the dollar store.
Yeah, that would tie into the, in TIF money.
In that next.
The one on Main Street.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we've got the, we've got the TIF money. Uh, that we're gonna allocate for the local match, the fifty-fifty match for the stretch of sidewalk from GSB to McDonald's.
But we also have some money that they already paid the town. That they put into a pot to pay for that sidewalk already.
Um, well, we didn't, they didn't pay us, well, you you're talking about the uh Dollar General and. There, yeah, we have that. We've got, I think, thirty-six thousand set aside there, yeah.
Okay, so that that's in a fund already.
Yeah, that's in that fund, so I've made. Uh, the M D O T folks aware of that so that they could tap in. We also have a. A uh, an easement agreement that I'm not, I'm not very pleased with the way that ended up. I I don't want to have an easement on private property. I want to have right-of-way that the town or the state owns. So, I've alerted Patrick and the Stan Loring to that and they'll they'll try to work something out there.
But we signed it already.
Yeah, I mean, as a fallback, we've got it, but we don't need to keep that. I think they they should be able to get right-of-way. When they, when they get, when they get the right-of-way for the rest of the project, they should be able to get the same agreement there for that project. I mean, in retrospect, you know, hindsight is great, but I I wish we had just said, build a five-foot sidewalk as part of this development. People will complain it's a corner lot that doesn't go anywhere, but.
It's over with.
And that's what we're doing from now on.
Yeah, that's what we're doing now. And that's what we're doing with uh the Camden Plaza.
Yeah.
So, yeah, in in retrospect, that would have been the thing to do. Let's say, just build the sidewalk and connect to it later.
And here are our specifications of a sidewalk, so maybe what we do is we. We say for the town, if you're gonna have a, one of these properties that come in, these are our standards for your sidewalk.
That's what we gave to Camden Plaza. We had right peers come up with the standards.
So as long as everybody knows what it is, it's not an asphalt curb, it's a granite curb and.
Because you can't build it for thirty-six thousand now, right?
No, you can't build, no way, no way, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah, that was one of the lessons learned.
And maybe we ought to put in there perpetual care agreement for when they put the sidewalk in, they get to pay so much upfront with.
Church Street, Matt, or?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we've got uh. You know, about twenty-eight thousand, thirty thousand allocated for the the current uh. Works is being done, the survey and the design work out of seventy-five thousand that we have available, but, you know, we're gonna need some. Some additional dollars and it, we we've got some additional private money that will come in for that, but um. It's gonna be a major cost, so we need to start, well, once we find out what we're talking about in terms of dollars. Then we'll, we'll uh start looking for grants, donations, that sort of thing.
Where does the sidewalk starting in?
It starts where the sidewalk ends at Pleasant Street. We had that as a community development block grant project. And uh, it goes all the way out to Main Street.
Oh, you mean uh Business Main Street?
Yeah, and so on, church follows it all the way out, yeah, yeah. So we got the money to do the design, uh, sent them back to the drawing board. I had the survey sheets here at the last meeting. We sent them, I sent them back to the drawing board saying. You need to give us some options uh to move the road over. Uh, because I don't know if Corey lives in that area, but it's really tight. Is that where he lives up there?
But I don't know if he was as as affected as the ones further up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So what about a bike lane on that when you're moving the road over?
Pretty tight quarters.
Well, I think, you know, it it was, it was once a fifty-foot right-of-way because it was the former. Route one Atlantic Highway, but if you go beyond, you know, like a five-foot walk with another six feet of. Public right-of-way, you're gonna be on people's properties. The houses, houses are too close to the road. The drainage issues and everything else.
I mean, we've already discussed shifting the roadway on towards the McDonald's end, just so we don't disrupt.
Yeah.
And that's with a five-foot.
Yeah, so I mean, it it'd be wonderful if if we could fit up a a bikeway on there, but. I just don't see how we can do it.
Is is the standard six feet? That seems pretty wide for a bike lane. I don't know.
How much?
No, six, you said six for.
I said, uh, well, but you know, you put a five-foot sidewalk in, but you include a six-inch curb and then you've got, I'm just adding, fudging it up a little bit. So, yeah, it's a five-foot walkway.
Right, what I'm saying is, you mentioned a six-foot bike lane, but I I don't think that you need a six-foot bike lane. I don't know what the standard is.
Well, even.
Well, I was saying with the sidewalk, what you're already acquiring for the sidewalk is gonna be about six feet. To add a bike lane is, I don't think is feasible.
Okay.
That that was my point, the reference to six feet.
Not not that much.
Anybody know what the standard bike lane is?
Eight feet.
A standard bike?
Yeah, when we, we've built, uh, if you want, if you want, if you want. For both directions, it's eight feet.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I'm going back ancient history here when in my previous job.
Okay, so it's four feet on one side.
Yeah, four feet on each side, yeah.
Well, you get it when you turn down from McDonald's to Biscuit Road, you get the one lane, yeah.
Yeah.
And for a multipurpose, you know, just whatever we referred to earlier, for a multipurpose path, it's ten feet. That's what, uh, that's the standard that Maine DOT has.
Not that much space down through there, no. Yeah. All right, Matt, how about Hodgston Street and we'll move down through everything here and.
Yeah. Okay, he he's gonna help me on the Hodgston Street, um, you know, there's some, um. I can, I can say this on TV, um, there are some issues among the neighbors there, so it's gonna be hard to get a consensus on what should be done.
Okay, yeah.
So I'm working on that.
Issues, what is uh?
Well, a few years ago, some of the neighbors wanted. Uh, the planning board and later the staff to close down uh Blue Haven. Oh, remember that?
Yeah, 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 okay.
But there's still some friction there.
Gotcha, all right.
And uh, and there's significant drainage when we did that previous one.
Yeah.
In that area, the roadway is.
Yeah.
Pretty bad.
We've, we've got to take care of the drainage when we do this, that's gonna, that, and that's. That's a component that C D B G funding would pay for. They won't pay for the roadway. But they'll pay for the, uh, you know, their their portion of the drainage if we can get a grant.
And if we can get the drainage fixed, I think the roadway will be much better off.
Yes, so work in, work in progress.
Yeah, no, there's just, yeah, a number. Of neighborhood issues we have to work through there.
Yeah, it's complicated.
That one is.
Complicated, yeah, all right, uh, yeah, Miles Street, um, where are we standing on that right now?
Uh, we've got an updated quote for um, for uh. Just the causeway and, you know, a foot and a half increase in the elevation. Five, without the, without the sidewalk, without the greenway, uh, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so. Um, and and Andrew has given me, um, a Andrew Hedrick and Gertlie Dorsky has given me a proposal for. That modified project to go out for bid again and. I did some negotiation with him. I said, we wouldn't have gone out to bid if we knew what your last estimate was, so we took off the bid portion. Of that estimate, but he still has to do some reworking of the design.
Okay.
So I haven't done anything on it because we're a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars shy. Of of what the engineer's estimate is, and my thought is, why would we go out to bid again for the third time? Without having the the funds identified. I mean, it's really, it's really awkward. It really puts contract.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Say put in the time to put together, so uh, what I'm recommending uh to you and I'll be recommending at that public hearing is that we use. The COVID money, you know, stormwater is a legitimate use and there's uh, uh, sixty-one thousand dollars of COVID. I mean, of of stormwater drainage in that project, so if we can take sixty-one thousand out of our two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We can put it into that, so that, that's gonna leave, assuming the engineer's estimate is correct, you know, sixty to seventy thousand more that we're gonna need to come up with.
That's much more manageable than.
Right, yeah, that brings it down, yeah.
You know, I think I, well, I shared with you, but I'll repeat it that the, you know, we will have lost an opportunity for a sidewalk. On that main road if we, if we don't build it now. We're gonna just build the one retaining wall, if we go with this reduced scope, one retaining wall. And a very limited width for the roadway, so you 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 won't be able to add a sidewalk later.
And later, yeah.
I get a question on the water line, um, the water line that goes down that, is that a private line?
It's a private line. Under a public road and um. Had some email discussions uh back and forth with Scott Abatoni. And with Andrew Hedrick, Andrew's reg- uh, saying that the water line itself would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars to replace. Um, I've, I've let the hospital know that we don't, we wouldn't consider that this part of their contribution. To replacing the causeway, they still have separate, their two hundred thousand, so um. Yeah, they need to find a funding source for that and then I've, I've. Given them a lead on some money, on some grant money. But it's it's only available if that's a, if that turns into a public water line, which I think it should. That's my opinion. It's under a public.
But it's got to be built to the standards of what.
It has to be built. It has to be built to the standards. Um, and Scott. Gave us a kind of a rough outline of what the standards would be. And then. The the water district should take it over at that point.
So when the road got turned over, the utilities didn't. Is that right?
It did not. They did not. But the road, it's a long history here. Now, you know, we we accepted it as a town way in nineteen forty.
Forty seven or forty eight.
Forty six or forty seven. And I don't know, you know, I always, well, it long preceded the water line. So I think the. Hospital probably came along afterwards, built the water line on their own.
Well, we got through the sewer in the parking lot. We should be able to get through this.
Yeah.
I mean, we just, we just have to continue to be nags, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it should be done right, though.
Oh, it's, well, definitely. I mean, there's no question. The water line ought to be replaced when the causeway is fixed. It's just a matter of.
Joint venture for all three parties involved.
We're not going to step up to to pay for the water line.
No.
Yeah.
Ready.
So that's where that is.
Okay.
That's, I'll try to keep my answers more brief. But that's, that's what that is.
Yeah, um, we have, uh, the parking lot, uh, the the fire station parking lot, that's pushed back a little bit.
Yeah, till fall.
It's still fall. So that's.
If they did, they worked down in in our municipal parking lot, we could wait until fall. And I talked with John about that. He's okay with it.
You didn't put the light rail in here, Matt. Putting the light rail around transporter.
We're doing light rail that way? Some of your track money?
Yeah.
That's what I.
That's what Matt did.
I did. That's what I did in Colorado.
Yeah. Hey, if you can find the money for it, let's do it. So, um. Yeah, we'll just keep moving down through here if anybody has any.
Yeah, the traffic.
And suggestions will.
Yeah, uh, traffic and parking, um. We've had that on the back burner, but that needs to be updated with some of the changes we've made in the. Parking lot, including the EV station. There are a few other items that need to be looked at on that. So we had a, there was a draft on my desk when we started, but the. I I think before I came, maybe that wasn't acceptable. And then we just put it on the back burner. It's not one of those urgent things.
Got shoved to the side.
Yeah, so, but we need to address it.
The, um, I didn't notice enough of the EV parking spots. Are those painted yet?
They're painted, but I want. The lines are painted and the signs are signs. I went down. Uh, but yeah, the signs are there, the lines are painted. I want Hugh to go back and and with a stencil put EV. Only on the two spaces.
Yeah, the sign on the end, and that's when I I talked to, because it it was turned so that the handicap spot was.
The wrong, the wrong side. Yeah, and then they.
So I just wanted it was a place.
Arrow when the arrow was the wrong direction. So I went down, I looked at it and I said, you know, no one would have done that. I mean, I, you know, I gotta give my folks more credit. So I thought about it and then I went, I went back and I, yeah, sure enough, I turned.
I know that's all it was. I would have just gone down and done it.
Somebody had turned it one eighty.
I'll keep an eye on it.
So, yeah.
But there's been, uh, yeah, there's been, I I saw some vehicles in, I know you had emailed me.
Yeah, and then there was, there was one this morning. I checked. It was a Massachusetts plate with a Chevy Volt.
Yeah, yeah. Chevy Bolt, yeah.
Bolt, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen a few vehicles in there, so. All right, we'll move, moving along to economic developments that we're at now, yeah. So we'll go down through if anything, anybody jump sour or anybody wants to. Go through, Matt, what are the high points through here?
Talking businesses.
Yeah.
I think I've got a fairly good rapport with, uh, most businesses in town, so. Open communications.
Except J and J Grocery, right? Except J and J Grocery. J and J Grocery.
The gro- grocery? Yeah. If you've got a few hours, we could discuss that too.
How often do you go down there and meet, talk to them?
I go down, well, I'm down there at least once a week.
And you go into the store?
I go in, well, I don't like to bother them now, but because they're so busy. But I do go in, I talk to them in the street and such, yeah. So I'm down there at least once a week.
He comes down and drags me out.
Puts a dunce cap on Daryl.
I've seen him downtown. See him around, yeah. But it's good, yeah, that's, that's, that's good to see. And I'll say the same thing with the police department, you know, and public officials having people around. Put a face to, faced everything and it makes a big difference for people.
Yeah, right now, I, like I say, I don't like to bother them because everyone is just. The crowds down there, yeah.
Yeah, in a good way. So, okay, yeah. All right, yeah, we'll move through and, uh, yeah, the formula store ordinance, that's been something that's been in the works for a while, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last year.
Last year, yeah.
Are you on the, oh, the formula store?
Yeah, we're moving through economic development here, sorry.
That's a big decision on, you know, when we, when we come to that, the the planning board land use advisory committee is approved in ordinance. And we'll, we'll get that on, uh, the agenda for a, uh, town meeting.
Yeah.
The public hearing, but that could be quite controversial. You're, you're not allowing any business in town. Um, that has more than nineteen stores and, you know, anywhere. So you're, you're. Telling Starbucks, McDonald's, Burger King, they can't go downtown.
Right.
C one.
That's just a C one, right, yeah.
So.
Well, we'll get the, the public's going to be, yeah, people are going to have.
So.
Have a opinions and thoughts on that, so, yeah. Um, all right, uh, yeah, I have to do the the Chamber of Commerce stuff now, is that? With the acquisition, how's that going? So next, next one down.
We're waiting. We are waiting. Every, every, it seems like every month now I send a note to the, uh. The state, our contact at Maine DOT and say where the heck is this? The response is, I'll check and get back to you. It's like the cycle. They, they have just put this, their appraisal. Division has put this on the.
So can we take that by eminent domain from the state? If they don't hurry up?
We get squatters rights on it?
Well, I mean, if you're willing to put the money into the legal services.
We like to spend money on legal.
I don't really want to, but if they're not gonna.
I, you know.
Get moving here, then maybe we'll speed up things.
How long has it been?
Oh, it's been a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, since, um, you know, and and John Roberts and Jim Gallagher, they were just raring to go initially and now they're saying. You know, what the heck? They still want to do it, but they're very discouraged by this. We did all the paperwork we we needed to do on our end and it now it's just a matter, we're in the queue for an appraisal and. They haven't been able to do it.
Nice looking building already to go on it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's well designed.
Building has been designed and everything.
Yeah, they're all ready to go.
Yeah, great plan for us, so.
They should just give it to us. Hell of the person. Yeah, that's what I'd ask.
Yeah.
They have to do, they have to do according to them. They have to do the appraisal.
So.
And then we negotiate it from there. We've already.
Do we have any political leverage, any, uh?
I think it's a mistake to.
Yeah, good.
State elected officials.
If we say the board talked about eminent domain, that might get a move in.
I'll call them again tomorrow.
I think Chloe would be good, you know, Chloe would be good at that.
But I I see Matt's point.
I, yeah, um, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't help to bring.
Sometimes.
Elected officials in on that, on those types of issues. So that's my experience.
But we can, we can force it a little bit.
Yeah, you can keep. Yeah, I'll call them. I'll let them know. I'll let them know the board's concern and how long this is taking, yeah.
Put the deed together, send them a hundred bucks.
Good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get the appraisal. And then we begin the negotiation process. And I start at zero and we meet somewhere. And then when we arrive at a number, we figure out who's going to pay for it.
We could send them a, send them a check and a thank you letter for.
Give them the appraisal.
Yeah. We have, we have our assessed valuation. And it's been so long, I I don't even recall. I think that was forty seven thousand, something to that effect.
Five dollars it is.
So Jim could update that, right? We could send it to him to see if that moves.
Yeah, but it's, it's, you know, it's going to be based on a willing buyer, willing seller sort of analysis. I. We did, they just need to give us a price to start a negotiation, yeah. And then maybe. That point, we got the elected officials involved and we say, hey, you ought to just give it to the town, but. Or we ask them to approve a bill, pass legislation that they give it to the town, you know?
It's just probably relatively low priority right now and it's just getting pushed aside.
I'll call them, I'll call them tomorrow again. I can, I can send you the thread of emails, but I think you get the drift, yeah.
All right, well, we'll move along here and, uh, we've, yeah, I think we've touched base on broadband already, haven't we, for the most part?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, with Evan there, um, museum in the streets.
Is that something you want to continue to pursue? I mean, Bob has has done some of the initial footwork on that and found some. Potential grant money.
Um, there's some, uh, there's some action with the historical society now too, right there, um, with the Derry Scott Historical Society.
Society, I don't know that it's ready for, uh. Public airing, but they've been looking at a place for a museum.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably, I, I.
Well, this would be different.
This is different, but.
This is what they have in New, in, um, not Newcastle, Wiscasset with the the placards out in front of the historic buildings.
Yeah.
And that's what this would be.
Wonder if what they can, you know, uh, if they can be involved in that.
Yeah, that we've, we've got this informal committee that's been working with Bob on. You know, making sure that whatever we put on the the plaques is, um, accurate.
Can't just make it up.
Yeah, that's right. You can make us some pretty good stories, but.
Make some ripper stories, so.
In this spot in eighteen.
This guy passed out.
Well, let's move along here, community development.
Yeah, you said something you want to have is continue, but it is as a lower priority.
Yeah, yeah, if it's not, you know, it's not hurting anything to keep.
It's an economic development deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, one of the uses, the potential uses of the COVID money is, uh. Pursuing affordable housing. And I don't know if you've got any views on that, but we do, we do need that. I hear that from, from, uh. Employers here in the area that they, they just can't, people just can't afford to live here to to enable them to work here. And that was, that was the top priority when I met with Cindy Wade a few weeks ago.
But was it when Ledwood Corp came in, wasn't that supposed to be working with Miles at the time, Mark? To find affordable housing for their employees? Do you remember that? I think there was, they were like, help sponsor type, that type of thing.
I'm not sure. Yeah, I know there was some hell of a house in empty, right?
What way are you going to put it?
Yeah, well, we've got, we've got three locations that have come up over the last couple of years and we've talked to developers. But we just haven't been able to get over that last hump.
Yeah. Well, let's go down through anything you want to touch base on, on, uh, the crosswalk light or?
Oh, I'm waiting for, you know, final numbers. From contractors so that we can figure out what balance we've got in the Bristol Road Sidewalk Project. And then if we've got somewhere between twenty five and thirty eight thousand. Maine DOT is agreeable to allowing us to use the grant money for the, uh. The pedestrian walkway, but I don't know if if we'll have that kind of money.
If you have the money, yeah.
Come with a coat of paint on the side of the crosswalk.
Is that come, is that the same?
Be painted.
The one there, yeah.
Would that be the same up in, uh, like the Biscuit Road and Church?
It would be, it would be, uh, similar to what we have on Main Street over here next to Mobius and what, um. You know, the, the.
Okay, yeah.
Coastal Rivers put in between the wheel back, Trailhead and GSP. So that's what we're looking at. I, I kind of like, I, especially on a state highway like that, I would hope we could put in brighter flashing lights too, because I don't think. Those are as noticeable.
Oh, gotcha.
They do work, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good setup, yeah. All right. Yeah, we've touched on the church street and the sidewalks and whatnot there. Any questions on that? Josh, when's your list coming up here?
First one.
Okay. All right, so we're looking at, uh, intergovernmental connections.
We have, I think we've got very good relationships with. With our surrounding communities and with the sanitary district.
So I guess on the sanitary water district is looking ten to fifteen years out. Maybe five years, expanding the water system, you know. Running it from Stan Pike to Egypt Road to the intersection or Stan Pike to Lesnar Road intersection and. Stan Pike Road to back, through Back Meadow to the Egypt Road intersection, you know. Is their plant, you know, finding out what their plan is for any type of expansion in the town of Dehmer Scotta. And what source, funding sources that we can look at. Not only for, for water, for houses, but for hydrant, the hydrant system for fire protection. Just to see if there's any way the thought processes to expand their system.
I think it's, Josh brings up a good point and I'd like to see him be put into this. Responsibility situation and because he knows so much about it and. Meet with the sanitary district to find out what that long term plan is.
That seems to tie into, um, looking at affordable housing somewhat too, you know, with developers, you know, you don't have utilities. In areas and, you know, it's long term plans, long term plans.
Cause you bring up some good points.
Yeah.
The district isn't going to pay for it. It's either got to be the developer or using some grant money.
Right, but if we, if they have, they'd like to expand and we can find some funds that are available to work with them to expand the system. Not only to improve fire protection, but the quality of water for some homeowners, you know, if we can, if we can look at that.
I did work with Scott on, on development of a proposal for. Uh, marine focused industrial park at Center Street. Do you remember that? So we had all the numbers together. We just. The developer didn't have any prospects for businesses, so we couldn't put a TIF there. So we really didn't have a funding source. But I mean, in that particular case, CMP, uh, the water district, this was the. You know, they'll, they're willing to take part in it, but they're not going to.
Not going to pay for it.
They're not going to pay for it, yeah.
To Josh's point, though, you you wonder, yeah, do they have plans in place? You know, I think something has helped this town along is we've had.
I doubt that they do.
Yeah, well, we've had projects kind of ready and when the money's available, you're ready to go.
Yeah.
You know, it seems like they want to be.
They don't do things, they don't do things on spec, you know, they don't, you know, say we'll front end it and then. We'll get reimbursed when the development goes in.
Right, right.
Yeah, which would be fantastic, but that's not, not, not the way it operates.
Yeah.
No, but it would be nice to see that, hey, we're going to put in five years, we're going to put three hundred feet of. Uh, of a water line down through, we're going to put one hydrant or something like that down this road. You know.
Well, what, what would you like us to do from the town standpoint on this?
I don't know. I guess if I could, if I just talked to, I guess I, if I'm allowed to talk to Scott about it and just say, hey, you know. What monies are available, you know, coming up or, you know, five years, do you foresee what program? what monies are available, you know, coming up, or, you know, five years, do you foresee what programs are available if you wanna expand your system, and if the town can help you in any way to expand that system, you know?
You know this.
With, yeah, with grant funding solutions, you know, is there any way we can look into that?
I, I'd go further, though, and make it an official thing that we asked Josh to go to a meeting and let him know what we're looking for.
Yeah.
And then that way, they will respond back to us, because I'm sure they must have a grand plan of ten years down the road. We would like to know.
Just start a conversation, and, 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 so we're all working together.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that, that down.
You know, I don't, I don't mind, I don't mind doing the legwork, and, and I don't mind talking to Scott, and just like to get the ball rolling.
There's the, um, I've got the, the book here, you know, the, the American Rescue Plan, the dollars that, uh, the county will be getting, the six point seven million can be used for water, wastewater improvements.
Right.
So there's a source, there's a clean water, uh, state revolving fund that can be used.
Right.
Uh, that, you know, you've gotta meet some pretty tight criteria.
Right, but if we can get things.
There are funds available.
If there's funds available, and most of them, like you said before, if you have a plan in place that you're working on, you've identified, and you've, you've identified it, so if we can identify these areas, and then the funding sources just kind of fall in our lap, then we're good to go, and it's not working.
You're ready for them, just have a plan in place.
I get a question from Max, because Max says it's gotta be in a planning stage for some of these monies that's already been in the process. If we went to the sanitary district and they had a grand plan where they want to expand that water, as being part of that, would that qualify us to be able to look at it from that angle?
Probably.
Yeah, come on up.
Important Max on the spot.
Grab the mic. So what's the question exactly?
The question would be is some of these funds that are coming available.
Right.
We were supposed to have some of this in the planning stage, is that correct? Like, to use COVID money?
Oh.
Or not?
Yeah, well, it depends what the subject is.
Water?
Yeah, waters, sewer, if you have it shovel-ready, then, yeah, they'd like to have, like, some planning stages and some justification behind it.
So what I'm saying is the town, even though the water district is a separate entity, we are still part of that.
Right.
And they did have a plan that showed they would like to expand water in our town.
Yeah.
Can we, can we use that plan?
Yeah. Use it, one hundred percent.
You know, so that's why I'm trying to.
We're reaching out, yeah.
Here's the, here's the wording that's in the, um.
Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Investments in water, sewer, and broadband, recipients may use SL, uh, F R F award funds, that's just, you know, that's the COVID money, uh, uh, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband, recipients may use the funds to cover costs incurred for eligible projects planned or started prior to March third, twenty twenty-one, so that's what, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, right, but if we, you know, there may be other rounds coming out, so if you can.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, just be prepared.
So if they have a plan, not aware of it, but if they have a plan.
Josh can bring it back to us, we're ready.
Find out.
So.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so I'm gonna put you down for that.
I'm gonna write back at you on the chat.
I would have to abstain from that.
All right, well, we'll move along here, um. Next line there, man, anything on, uh, change to work closely with the school district, I, that's just an ongoing, uh, move on to.
Again, yeah, we, we've worked with them well, um, I've been working with the, you know, the three members of the school committee, as well as the finance director and that, and the superintendent, right, very closely, so, yeah, that's a good, good relationship there.
Good, good, right, and citizens' communications and outreach, um, and we can just go down through, is anything that, uh,
Yeah.
Anything out of the ordinary?
I think the land use advisory committee is geared up to take on the comprehensive plan, and there are, uh, probably two or three more citizens that would like to take part in that, so.
Okay.
Uh, I put a deadline for us for November to get that up and running.
Sound good?
I think we're maximizing the use of L CTV.
We are right there.
How much money?
How you doing, Larry?
I'm trying to move things along here.
This is too weak, right?
This is just a work, y'all.
Make a motion for that camera.
I haven't set a timeline.
Yeah.
Flat rate. Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll move down through, is anything that jumps up?
Yeah, I don't know, what you, I guess we'll decide in the next part of the workshop, whether you wanna charter commission to make a major overhaul, or whether it's just a few areas where you wanna have amendments, that's the last one on that page.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I.
On there, let's.
Hey, Daryl.
Uh, yeah, we're gonna.
We're, we're eight o'clock.
I think we're gonna table the, the charter, um, yeah, charter discussion tonight anyway. Yeah, I don't think I have to pull the board to.
No.
The only thing on that is, you know, if we wanna make a November election, and we re, we, we, we have to do a general election, because we won't have the percentages that we need to, uh, to get anything passed, if we just do a, a regular June election.
I, I think, I think it's gonna take, it's gonna take a year for some of these, if you get all the process, because we're not gonna, we're not gonna make.
It's not an emergency.
Well, again, it decides, you have to decide what level you want, do you want, uh, commission to come in and, uh, look at revamping the, the charter, or do you wanna just go through and make some changes, like in the, the, uh, the waiver of bid requirements and that sort of thing, just kinda tweaking it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just go through it, and we'll, and we'll wait, we'll table that.
But you gotta, you gotta meet certain timetables.
Well, that's what I'm saying is.
It's not gonna happen.
If, if, yeah, we gotta, let's see, we're, we're almost into September, and if we wanna make the general election, that's, uh, you know, first.
Yeah.
First Tuesday after the first, Monday in November.
So Mark looks like.
Next meeting.
Yeah, you're, you're the lead man on chat.
Okay.
But I, I will, I will ask, um, a couple individuals, because I think they were on the initial charter.
Yeah, I guess the original, yeah.
Committee.
It should be on the.
Just to see if they might.
Should be in that document I sent out.
Yeah, re, reach out.
Reach out and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, they may wanna.
Set in on it, set in.
I don't think we're looking at a major rewrite or anything, just a few things that we're looking at, uh, yeah, maybe reword or revamp, or, or.
Union Seventy Four is going.
Explore. Yeah, yeah, let's go, so it's not a huge amount of changes, and, and they're not, um, they're not, uh.
Yeah, it's not in here.
Emergency changes.
Sometimes they put in there who was on the commission.
I, I will, I, I think I know a few people that are on it, so I'm gonna put a couple feelers out there.
Well, let's just, yeah, we'll table that till next, uh, the last two items under the goals and action plans, anybody? Uh, coastal rivers and the EV charging station we talked about.
Yeah, and, uh, Daryl asked me about publicizing it, uh, which we can do, and I think Evan, this Evan has said, has already done a little piece in the, the newspaper on it, but the, the response is gonna come from people who have EV vehicles and are traveling through, and they, they look at their app, yeah.
Yeah.
Chris, that's where I was.
Is there a central clearing system?
That's the original. Yes, there's, there's several, yeah.
So are we on that?
Talk to Chris.
Yes, uh, efficiency main has one, and then Evan, uh, the other Evan, uh, made sure we were on a couple others, so, but I think efficiency main takes care of all of that. There's already, I saw Massachusetts car there, there today, over the weekend, there was a New Hampshire car, so I think they're, you know, they're obviously seeking us out.
We ought to see, sometime, check in, see who, who's the furthest one away, who made the most. Geez, you came from California?
All right, is there? Okay, these are okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're good on the.
Did you have any to add, other than?
If anybody has anything to add to the goals and plans at this point?
No, this is not a tunnel vision work plan, that's for sure, it's not all fixated on waterfront, so, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to this town, so, I think it's a.
Good comprehensive plan.
You wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I will, because it's already a workshop, so, you know, we already.
I'm just hinting.
We can go.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.